Good afternoon, Council President Clark, members of council. My name is Francis Bielli. I'm the Executive Director of the Board of Pensions. With me is Suman Honda, Chief Investment Officer, my counsel, and our new Deputy Director, Shamika Talfaro, as of today, April 1st. It's not an April...I was going to tell you we're 100% funded, April Fools, but I decided not to do that.
Thank you very much for your testimony.
So, you have my testimony. Our budget request is the same as it was last year. You see the demographics for our staff, 79% female, 60% African-American, 5% Asian-American, and our executive staff is 57% female and 71% minority. Our funding percentage is down slightly from last year. It's at 47.4%. It was at 48.1%. The main reason for the decline, according to our actuary, is the reduction of 10 basis points in the assumption rate and also accounting for a .54% liability load due to the Pension Adjustment Fund. So adding those two together account for the reduction in the funding level. The investment return was at 12.1% on a market rate and 10.94% on an actuarial rate. And our OEO numbers, we are again making progress in that area. You may remember back in FY12, we were 9.33% of fees paid. FY13, that increased to 13.18%, which was a 41% increase. And through the first quarter thus far of FY14, we're at 17.65% of fees paid, 34% increase over FY13, and an 88% increase over that FY12 number. Part of our efforts in that, in the OEO area was again, we conducted the utilization study through Investment Alliance, which showed that 12.1% of firms qualified as minority or female-owned firms pursuant to our investment guidelines. So we are above that 12.1%, but we're not satisfied with where we are, even with the 17.65% of fees. We think we can do much better, and we anticipate approximately an additional $120 million going to both female-owned and minority firms through the rest of the calendar year. And a large part of that is due to how we reorganized the Opportunity Fund, expanding from the areas of equity and fixed income into the areas of private equity, hedge funds, and real estate, which were not part of the opportunity set prior to this. So, again, we would ask that you approve our budget, and we're happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Quick question. Page four of your testimony, you state that the assumed rate of return of the fund is now 7.85, reduced from 7.95. Given that the market rates are at historical lows, do you think that that's reasonable to think that we will still be, although reduced, at 7.85?
Do we think we'll be able to meet that?
Yeah.
Well, we've...the historical, since inception, since we've been tracking our return, which is 1988, the return, average return that we have is 7.91. So we have exceeded that assumption rate even dating back to 1988, which includes the 2001 dot-com meltdown, includes the 2008 meltdown. So even considering those, the average return's been 7.91. So I think it's definitely something that we can achieve. I also would point out that we are below the median assumption rate if you look at large pension plans from throughout the country. In the experience study that we received just last Thursday, there's a chart which says the median assumption rate of large plans throughout the country is 7.9%. So reducing it 90 basis points over the last six years has gotten our fund below the median, which is really a good achievement. So yeah, I think we can meet that return.
Okay. That's actually good news, I guess, in this environment. There's the potential for a number of things to happen over the next year as it relates to the fund, potential PGW sale, potential sales tax, and who knows what else might come up, particularly when you're dealing with Harrisburg, you just never really know. It would be helpful to us if you gave us some direct likelihoods in terms of various scenarios, the ones that are out there, obviously you can't do it based on the unknown, but right now there are a number of scenarios. So it'd be helpful to City Council if that information came directly from you to us on the potential activity that may happen over the next year. Can you do that for us?
Yes, and much of that work would be done through our actuary, but yes, we could do that.
Yeah, that would be very helpful to us. Thank you. I actually don't have anything else. Any other members have questions of this witness? Thank you very much for your testimony.
Thank you. Have a good day.
We're breaking records today, I'll tell you. Counsel will stand and read to us until 1:30.
McKethen, our next department is the Office of Property Assessment. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Council President, members of City Council. I'm Richie McKethen, Chief Assessment Officer for the Office of Property Assessment. Here with me today are eight members of my senior management team. They are Michael Piper, Deputy Chief Assessment Officer, James Arrows Jr., Real Property Assistant Administrator, Mark Candidi, Real Property Assistant Administrator, Jay Devine, Real Property Assistant Administrator, Joseph Solomon, Real Property Assistant Administrator, Catherine Dreher, Assistant Administrator, Veronica Daniel, Administrative Services Director, Kevin Keane, Administrator of Mass Appraisal Analysis, Tom Darkody, Business Analyst Manager, and Drew Aldinger, Legal Counsel for OPA. We are here to testify on the proposed fiscal 2015-year operating budget. The Office of Property Assessment, commonly known as OPA, is primarily responsible for discovering, listing, and valuing all real property in the city of Philadelphia in a fair and equitable manner. Additionally, the Office of Property Assessment is charged with providing a response to real property tax appeal cases, applying real property tax exemptions, and administering the real property tax abatement program. There are approximately 579,000 parcels of real property in the city of Philadelphia. These include residential, condominium, multifamily, large apartment complexes, retail, hospitality, office, industrial, warehouse, hospital, government, city, state, and federal, religious exempt and non-exempt property uses. As a short-term goal, the Office of Property Assessment plans to respond to any outstanding first-level review and board of revision of taxes, appeal cases that have been filed. Additionally, OPA will conduct an audit of all exempt parcels located throughout the city. As a long-term goal, OPA will continue to collect valuable data on the characteristics of parcels located throughout the city in an effort to keep all parcel records current. For fiscal year 2015, we are requesting from council a general fund budget of $13,727,918. Fiscal year 2015, OPA's budget request continues to support full staffing target at 217 positions. Class 100 obligations are anticipated at $10,158,928. There are only slight changes to the department's class 300 and class 400 budget. The combined class for 300 and 400 fiscal year 2015 budget requests total $794,600. OPA will continue to support the implementation of AVI and maintenance of the comprehensive changes to the property tax system. The fiscal 2015 budget request includes an overall increase of $401,642 to fully finance property reassessment activities. OPA's total fiscal 2015 budget request amounts to $13,727,918. I would like to thank you for this testimony, and I will handle any questions at this time.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. McKethen. Let me start out. Page two of your testimony, you state that there are still 37 unfilled positions in your department. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Could you describe the challenges you have in hiring, and do you realistically anticipate being able to hire all those vacant positions in the next fiscal year?
We have gone through great challenges as far as our hiring. We've most recently, as approximately, I would say, two months ago, gone before the Civil Service Commission and spoken with them. We've been working with HR, the HR department, about things we can do to invoke a more intense hiring process. We've looked at our salaries. We've looked at revising some of the qualifications, things of this nature, to get more people in. We continue to test, and we continue to try to seek individuals. I can't say for sure that we'll be able to hire 37, but we'll continue that effort.
That's your...but that's still...
That's the goal, right.
Okay. I had some other...but since Councilman Good beat me here, I'll respect that and recognize Councilman Good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, sir.
Testimony, you say OPA will conduct an audit of all exempt parcels located throughout the city. Can you tell me the scope of that audit?
Sure. I'll have Mike Piper, my Deputy Assessor, talk to you about that.
Good afternoon, Councilman Good, members of council. I'm Michael Piper, Deputy Chief Assessment Officer of the Office of Property Assessment. Our intent is to conduct a complete audit of all the statutorily exempt properties within the city of Philadelphia, weeding out the ones that are owned by governmental entities. And we've actually, at this point, come up with a form. We've come up with some ways of identifying the taxable status in the eyes of the IRS. In other words, being able to determine whether or not some of these entities have a 501(c)(3) or have had one and have lost it in the interim. So we've identified what it is that we're going to do to try to determine whether or not the entities are eligible for exemption, and that's the first thing. The second part of the process is we're going to conduct a separate audit to look at the properties themselves, to see if they're being...if they're continuing to be used for the purposes that were stated when they acquired the exemption in the first place.
Okay. Before the audit is complete, of the 579,000 parcels, do we know how many are abated? How many are exempted?
About 22,000 or so. Again, that would include...some of those would include different governmental entities, Commonwealth, Pennsylvania, federal government, but about 22. And if you take out the governmental entities, it's a lot less than that. It's probably closer to about maybe 15,000.
Okay. Can you provide us up-to-date information on the number and value of exempt properties and the number of value of abated properties?
We can. We can provide that.
Another technical question, which I know they answered, but I have to ask for the record. Can the owner of a tax-abated property receive a homestead exemption?
No. Let me revise that.
Let me ask Kate Dreher, who's our homestead specialist. Oh, Drew, well, Drew, come on. Sorry.
Good afternoon, Councilman Good, members of council. There's new legislation that was recently adopted that would prohibit tax-abated properties from benefiting from the homestead exemption, starting in tax year 2015.
So it was adopted too late?
That's right. It was adopted too late for 2014, but it will be in effect for 2015.
So for the first year, AVI, you're asking tax-abated owners that are only taxed on land, and we're knocking $30,000 off that land as well?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Chair.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman. Mr. McKethen, I know this was a challenging year, to say the least. The initial reviews, I don't know, there's still...how many approximately left to do?
We have approximately, I would say, 3,000 or less FLRs to actually...
3,000? Wow, okay. Now, I'm not asking this critically, because again, I'll repeat that I know this was a challenging year, but I know originally, we heard that, I think it was like the fall last year, that you thought you'd be finished with a lot of these, or most of these.
Right.
And obviously, we're way past that. Kind of discuss what's been the challenge, what's been the problem?
Sure.
Staffing, whatever?
Sure. Naturally, staffing is always a challenge and an issue, but we would more than likely be complete with the FLRs, but the Board of Revision of Taxes season kicked in. And so we have to respond to the Board of Revision of Taxes, any appeals that are filed with them. And so we had to slack off of the FLRs, because anytime you have a board case and an FLR, the actual board decision is going to actually render the consequence as far as the values concerned ultimately. And so we had to sort of geared more towards the Board of Revision of Taxes cases and slack off of the FLRs.
So if somebody put in an FLR and then appealed to the BRT, and I'm sure a lot of people did that, did both, right?
Right.
The...was it the ones that appealed to the board that you slacked off, to use your term? Or did you not match it up like that? Am I making sense of what I'm saying?
Well, we attempted to see what actually had a board case, because once the board season kicked in, which started, I believe, in January, those dates that we actually did receive are solid. So we had to address them. I don't know if this is answering your question, but anything that had an FLR was looked at immediately if it had a board case filed, because oftentimes, you're going to have a similar outcome as far as OPA's perspective. And so we rushed to look at those cases first and get those cases settled, because we might even be able to...the attempt was to get as many withdrawals from the board hearings if they had actually filed an FLR. So we went down that path.
Yeah, because I know that was the original thought, that it would cut down on the appeals to BRT.
Right.
If you took care of the FLRs. And I know you want to do the due diligence, and it doesn't seem to me that...because I'm just hearing in the area where I live, where the ones that appeared to be, have, you know, the best argument seemed to be the ones getting the answers later. Like, the answers that people have been getting more recently, at least in the ones I'm aware of, have been getting more favorable responses on the FLRs. Is that coincidence, or is that just...
Well, that might just be coincidence. I mean, initially, we took the approach of, let's handle the biggest volume of FLRs that we could handle in the shortest amount of time, because we did want to get this settled as much as possible. And so we did look at cases where, initially, where individuals did not necessarily prove a case to us. We got a lot of FLRs that were filed, where people were just...seemed to just be angry in general about a lot of different things in city government.
We heard it from a few of them ourselves.
And so we attempted to knock as many of those out first, because to get to the latter cases, you have to set up schedules to go out and meet with the taxpayers, they have to be home, and that takes a little bit more time. And so our initial approach was to knock out as many of the ones that did not have credible case as far as their filing, and get those handled, and then work our way through everything else.
As far as the personal divisitation of the properties, what did you base it on? Was that something the homeowner asked for, or depending on what argument they made, like, that kind of thing?
It was a little bit of both. If a homeowner had a situation where we really needed to get inside to see damage and things like that, we naturally attempted to go out and see those. If a homeowner was, you know, had a case where they weren't talking about anything interior, or there was no real argument about anything other than maybe some sales or activity or anything in the neighborhood that didn't necessarily revolve around real estate, we didn't attempt to schedule an appointment for those.
Okay. Now, as far as properties that, I'm sure there were some put in for the initial review, were turned down, but are appealing to the board, obviously, right?
Yes.
If the board rules in the homeowner's favor, in other words, brings it down, how does that affect...because are you still planning to assess every year, or...
Yeah. The goal initially, when I first arrived and started testifying to you as a council, was to reassess every year. That's ultimately the goal, because you want to keep your assessments as current as possible. Now, what we have encountered, not due to any circumstance in OPA, are some challenges, naturally one, as I mentioned always, with staffing, but more recently, the relation with the board as far as the actual Board of Revision cases being scheduled, and we actually getting a schedule. In the assessment world, when you get to appeals, everything is done in a cycle, and so you're doing various things every time, every year, to get ready for the next year's reassessment. And we've been challenged in doing this because we haven't been able to get a full schedule, say, for example, six months out from the actual board. So it's kind of hard for us to plan on a regular basis, from day to day, week to week, what our activities will be. And so we have to take the approach of just handling and answering nothing else but appeals until we can actually get a schedule and have something where we can plan and work around, and that's been our challenge. And so, yeah, my initial plan upon arrival here was to reassess every year, and I still intend on doing that as much as I can, but challenges along the way could help, could prevent that.
Prevent that. And I'll turn it over to the other members, but the point I was trying to get at is, if the BRT rules brings down, just to give a figure, property was put at OPA at $300,000. They appealed, it was brought down to $200,000. Well, next year, how will that decision affect if you do reassess that property? I mean, would you be...because obviously, the assessor thought it was a higher amount. Is...you follow what I'm saying?
Yeah, I got you. Every assessment year stands on its own. So a property can be reduced by the board in one particular year, and then revised by OPA the following year.
Even if nothing's changed, it's still possible?
Even if nothing in the property has changed, because what the board would be looking at are sales activity from a period that is different from what OPA would be using to look at it for the following reassessment. And so that's why in the assessment world, in our industry, every year stands on its own.
Okay. All right. There's some council members who want to ask questions. I won't be laboring that. Councilman Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And since there's a number of people, we'll go with the five-minute rule to start, okay?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. How you doing, Richard?
How you doing, sir?
I'm doing pretty good. Can't complain. Just wanted to do additional follow-up. Now, last year, when we talk about, I think for your staff this year, you're hiring how many new people?
Well, we have approximately 37 positions open.
37 open?
Yes.
How many are being filled to date?
We're constantly trying to fill positions.
Okay. So in terms of actually...excuse me. In terms of the information that your team is actually collecting, right? And I know last year, you talked about the lack of technology and the issue of human error in terms of actually individuals inputting information. How are we moving...have we moved toward a level of technology that will help us actually record the data, the assessment data?
Okay. What we're doing is we're looking to move in the near future, we're looking to move to a much more automated system. Now, we have to go through a process, city process with an RFP and things like that, and we're at a point now of attempting to hire someone to help us write the requirements for that.
What's the timeframe?
The timeframe is, we have been meeting, I would expect, and I'll probably have to get individuals in charge of the actual project, but the timeframe is for us to move on this right now. We have put together some items to have looked at by the Law Department, I believe, so we can move forward.
Will you all be working with the Office of Information Technology as well?
Surely. We're working with OIT. Adele Adib is one of the people that are on our committee for this, and as well as several people in my office who work for OIT.
So in terms of the RFP process, the timeframe, you think in terms of writing the RFP process...
I would say within the next year.
In the next year?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, and just one other question. Give me an idea, and I think you kind of alluded to, now we're looking at post-AVI, right? AVI has been implemented, assessments have gone out. I don't want to be redundant in terms of how many first-level reviews that have come in, how many have been granted, how many have been denied. Because I know that information have already been discussed, but give us an idea of how you're going to move forward in terms of the actual assessment process. Will it be every year, every other year?
Our goal is naturally to reassess every year. And when I say reassess, that does not necessarily mean that every parcel will get a change in value. What that means is that we'll review the values where they are and see if there needs to be any revisions to the values. I would anticipate that we'll never have what we had initially with AVI, where everything had to be changed as drastically as it was, because we had never done a comprehensive reassessment citywide before, and now we have that accomplished. We'll be looking at the city typically on an annual basis, but I'm quite sure we'll never have a situation where everything changed like it did before.
So will every individual household will be reassessed under the new system?
It'll be reviewed, yes. It'll be reviewed, and it...some of them will change, some of them will not. Only the areas that are still constantly what we call hot.
Like point breeze?
The areas that continue to have a lot of activity will see a change in assessed value, but the areas that pretty much are where the sales and the assessments are right on point, you won't see changes neighborhood-wide in those areas.
So we can expect this in 2015?
Once again, I'm challenged right now until I can get the appeal situation handled with the Board of Revision of Taxes. I'm trying to get a schedule now of all of the cases, and I can plan and do some things. You know, that's my biggest challenge about trying to get something for 2015.
So there may be a possibility?
It's a little early to tell right now. I'd be hesitant to say definitely, one way or another, but that is one of my biggest challenges.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome, Councilman. We're lucky we live where we do, aren't we? Councilman Reynolds Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
It's very interesting, because my questions are...my line of question are very much similar to Councilman Johnson. But let me first back up to this staffing issue, because these ideals and strategies are great, but they mean nothing if you don't have the staff to make it happen. So what are your...what's your thinking...I mean, you stated in your... But I mean, you stated in your testimony, it has been difficult to attract and retain evaluators. So, just speak more about why you think that's so, to the extent that that's real. What strategies have you thought about to arrest that manpower issue?
Sure.
And what entities have you thought about in terms of partnerships that could help you get to those persons who possess some facts, some of that skill, like HAPCO or BOMA or what's the other? Building Industry Association. And my thinking is government can no longer work in silos because we end up with circumstances like this. And to the extent that we can facilitate working relationships with other professionals who may indeed be in the private industry but can assist us, you know, following proper protocols, there may be opportunity. So, I'm just curious to know where your thinking is about how you fix that dilemma?
Sure. First of all, I'll start and then I'll have my HR person, Ms. Daniel and Michael Piper come up because they've been side by side with me and trying to offset this challenge. First things first, I think our salaries are really low as far as being competitive for a city in Pennsylvania that is actively doing reassessment work and doing it the way we're having to do it and doing it, you know, on an annual basis. I think our salaries are really low. Matter of fact, I looked on the internet, you know, I've been in other localities, DC, Richmond, places like that, their starting salaries in Richmond are higher than what we have here.
Is that right?
And so, that's a big problem. We sat down with the HR department, we were able to try to look at some nuances. We did actually get the ability to increase our salary somewhat, but I still think it's a challenge. We sat, met with the Civil Service Commission because one of the things we have as far as being challenged of hiring people in the area is that we have a mandatory residency requirement. And so, we met with the Civil Service Commission and the result of that was that we got the ability to have people have to move into the city 10 years after they have accepted a position.
How many years?
Ten years after they have...
They have 10 years to move into the city?
Yes.
Do you understand that logic?
Well, this is what we got back from the Civil Service Commission. However, the challenge was, you know, individuals who were looking at coming to work for us had a problem with the residency requirement.
I need to make sure I understand that. So, they can accept a position and they can, they can live where they are up to nine years and 11 months, but in 10 years, they have to move into the city?
Yeah, Ms. Daniel, you want to walk through?
Hi, I'm Veronica Daniel, Administrative Services Director for the Office of Property Assessment. The answer is yes, they do. So, again, as Mr. McKeithen stated, we did have a discussion with the OHR department. We talked with the director and we met with the group that was OHR and OPA and the Civil Service Commission. And they agreed to give our employees, employees who, well, new hires who don't live in the city, a 10-year residency waiver.
And so, with that, you know, we would, we thought that we might get an influx of people. We go to meetings out in Telford and places like this and individuals look at our situation and they're curious. However, we haven't begun to see a wealth of people who have applied to come in.
Could I please ask my follow-up question on that issue?
Since you said please so nicely.
So, having worked in the higher ed part of the column for a long time, knowing that college students, we have the richest mix of college students in the region and too many of them come, get their education and fly. Could we examine the possibility of sitting with the appropriate personnel in some of our higher ed institutions, there are only 99 in the area, in the region, and look to see, first look at the skill sets required, knowing that young people come out of college, typically flat-footed because they can't get a gig, and look to see where we can make a match and create a pipeline for these type of young professionals because the salaries are so challenging?
Sure. Good afternoon, Councilman Reynolds Brown. We actually, at the behest of the Civil Service Commission, when they saw that we were having these problems hiring, we actually met with Community College of Philadelphia a couple times and, you know, had some familiarity with the business programs over there. I knew they did actually have a real estate program. And we talked to them about the possibility of putting together a program in which a student would come out with either a certificate or a two-year degree that would make them have all the qualifications we need.
Yes.
And it sounded like a good idea to them and to us and to the Civil Service Commission. I think where we got a little stuck was most people that are looking to get involved in real estate, they're, at, young people, they're looking at, you know, the different possibilities, sales, okay, but maybe what we do, appraisal. And for most things, you don't need a college degree. So, we, the conversation, I guess, got a little stuck when it came to what type of demand there would be so Community College could sell this program. We're still going to have some more discussions with them because we thought that was a good idea. We would like to see people come into a program and finish with real estate fundamentals, appraisal skills, writing skills, basic algebra and calculus.
Sure.
Yeah. So, we are going to continue to discuss that with Community College and see what develops.
Okay. I would urge you to do that. They do have a new president coming, but you don't have to wait till leadership is in place to move an idea that makes sense. So, I would urge you to resume those discussions because you're talking about a real J O B at the end of a certificate program. And there are too many young people, you know, who have families who are looking for, looking for work. Yes.
Also, Councilman Brown, Councilman Brown, when we advertise for our positions, one of the places that I, one of the organizations that I reach out to is Temple University's Real Estate Institute.
Very good.
So, I work very closely with the Barbara Corns, who is the director, I think, of that institution. So, we do let them know anytime we have, anytime the exam is announced, I send her a direct communication, giving her all of the details of that position.
Okay. So, finally, I would say add into your protocols the practice of informing council people. We get approached all the time about where can I find work? And knowing that this is a place in government where there's opportunity pending you have the appropriate credentials, you know, becomes an additional piece of information we can give to people who are desperate for work.
We appreciate that and we will, I will do so in the future.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Heenan?
Thank you.
We didn't forget about you.
I hope you have a Snickers bar. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thank you. So, just to figure out where to start here, we were talking about the positions that were available. What are the different tiers? You were shown three different tiers. Did you discuss that?
No, we haven't discussed that. For evaluator, there's a series that runs, evaluator one, evaluator two, and evaluator three. And then, we have the supervisory evaluator, clear on up to the actual chief of assessments.
Okay. And when you were going through the entire city, sending out evaluators for the real onsite assessment, is that correct, onsite?
Yeah, the inspections.
Every GMA, every parcel was visited by, or drive-by, by an evaluator?
The goal was for all residential parcels to get a field inspection.
Okay. So, a field inspection, were you at full staffing levels when that took place?
We didn't...
I think you were, if I recall from last year, at 100. You were looking to have, and I know you were struggling, because I mean, I think you were struggling to fill some of these positions.
We've never had 217 positions, which is what we would consider full staff.
Full staff, right. How many did you have when you were evaluating the city, when they were out there, before this was implemented, you know, by city council, authorized?
I'm not sure of the exact number at that time, but I'll be more than happy to provide you with that information.
If you could provide that to the chair, that would be helpful. Thank you. Who, so, one of the things that jumps out at me is in your testimony and data that you provided, you provided information by zip codes. Right? Wasn't it?
Well, I think that was the homestead.
The homestead by zip codes?
Yeah, if you're looking at what was sent to you as far as what city council received, you're looking at the homestead.
Okay. So, the homestead was broken down by zip codes. So, my question to that is just more of an observation. Why would we be reporting, you know, homestead information back to council members by zip codes when everything from the beginning was broken down to GMAs?
Well, I'll let the homestead, Kate Dreher, come up and tell you exactly why I went there. But when you're talking about GMAs, you're talking about valuation things, activity sales, inspections. It works better for our valuation process as far as GMAs are concerned because that's how, normally how an assessment jurisdiction will operate, through neighborhoods, through GMAs, through things like that. When you're talking about programs, and the homestead is a program that typically across the country isn't held in the assessor's office, they may use zip codes, but Kate, you want to...
Good afternoon. I'm Kate Dreher and I've been managing the homestead exemption program. Councilman, to answer your question, we had just done it by zip code just for this information, but we can certainly break it down.
Just, the only reason I say it, it's a bit confusing when we, or at least I'm going to speak for myself. I adjusted the GMAs and started to understand the reasoning for GMAs, although, you know, there's still a lot of unanswered, I would say, there were still a lot of questions about, you know, different parts in the GMA. But, and then having it, report it back on zip codes, it broadens it a little more and it takes me out of my focus on the district and the neighborhoods. So, if, you know, for my purpose and, you know, the people I represent, I would prefer to have GMAs. As weird as that may sound, I mean, it helps me when I'm trying to figure out trends, you know, in why there are some neighborhoods that, you know, are pretty good with the homestead and some neighborhoods that were lacking. I mean, I had a concerted effort in coordination with your office and the council president in trying to communicate with every homeowner who qualifies for homestead. So, and I want to continue to do that. You know, we're, you want to queue or you want to...
Yeah, there's people who haven't had a chance yet.
Okay. Well, I'll come back and finish because I still have some further homestead questions.
Sure.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman O'Neil?
Yes. I understand I missed the 10-year residency. Okay. We don't have to talk about that, but hopefully, we don't hear about that too much anymore.
No, not really, no.
Let's get past that. The, I just have a question. I think, under the circumstances, the people in your office did a phenomenal job. I just, I can tell from complaints. And particularly up against the clock, understaffed and all that. Where they didn't do so well wasn't in the average house as I, or business as I saw. It was where something was unusual about the property. A swim club, zone residential on five acres and they're, it's all, you know, it's all nonprofit, everybody, you know, buys a little membership and has a share in the place. And families go there, walk, most of them, or drive very short distance. You know, they get a bill that's like five times what their taxes were. And if you could build houses on the whole property someday, it would be worth that except they have only X amount of street frontage, so they really can't do a whole lot with the property. A volunteer organization that is being judged commercial, what I, maybe about four or five of these, I'm not, there's not a lot that have come to my attention anyway. Some people may have gone right to their appeal after the informal review. But is there a structure where I can bring this to somebody's attention? Because these are kind of mom and pop things, you know, we'd call them if they were, if they were a store, you know. It's, everybody there is on limited income, they're volunteering. And they have a good K. This is not something where, in some cases, they were reduced, but not by any, by the assessor, but not by any, by his imagination where they think they should be or where, closer to where they were and probably should be under the new system. What can I, as a district councilman or any councilman, do to bring this to somebody's attention like yourself or somebody at a higher level that can maybe save somebody $5,000, $10,000, $15,000, $20,000 going to the board a year from now? Or at least tell them that, you know, you've got to spend the money. Sorry, this is, everybody's sat down and this is it. You're not talking a lot of cases. I'm talking, you know, 160,000 people in my district, probably about 60,000 properties, and I'm talking about maybe five that have come to my attention. One was a commercial piece. I don't think it's, hardly anybody has gotten to the board. It's a commercial piece, small shopping center. Their model is, and they buy shopping centers all around the region, they buy them cheap on, at very low prices, below market. They're rescue, the rescue things, whether in Ben Salem, South Jersey, Philadelphia, Delaware County. And they put lower-priced stores in as a result. They can charge a lot less. Guy explained it to me very well. And they knew their taxes were going up because they were doing a refinancing, but they weren't being quadrupled. They talked to the assessor. The assessor said, well, this is the price we base all this on, sales, square footage and all that. He said, we understand, except everybody else in Northeast Philadelphia, for instance, is, all the other shopping centers you're comparing are full price, they get full price, and that's it. We get 70% of that because we do big lots, we do this, we carry these around with us, these different clients in our different centers because they'll come in at a lower number. The assessor agreed with them but said that that is, you're right, I made a mistake. I mean, I was using a general rule, wasn't making a mistake himself, but he realized that they were a special case. But they were told, but I can't do anything for you. I've been told that's the way it is. You've got to go for your appeal. Now, that's a business guy. I'm not too concerned about that person in terms of being able to handle that legal thing and all, even though they shouldn't have to. But I just wanted to bring one of those kind of cases in. Then I've got a couple that live on a large parcel of ground that has no access. It's off the Woodhaven Expressway near I-95. They have Franklin Mills on one side, they were boxed in. They had their taxes go up because at one time, after they both finished work, or he finished work, she was a stay-at-home, they ran a seasonal nursery business on their property. So, somebody, they've not run it, they're in their, they're up there in years, let's just say that. They discontinued their business, it's no longer there, they don't, they don't have a business privilege anymore or anything like that. It's closed off. But, and there's three little parcels, very, almost no value. I mean, when I say no value, maybe half a million, a million dollars if somebody could do something with it. But boxed in, no frontage that you can get to, you've got to go around the gas station to get to it, it doesn't really, but they are in the process of, they've had their informal review. And let's just say they went from, you know, $13,000 in taxes to like $85,000 or something, some enormous number there. Their valuation was brought down by the assessor, but brought down from like $8 million to $5 million. And they hope their property has enough value to provide them in, but they have a small house on it, very little access, they'd have to have the perfect, as of right, you can put like five... can put like five houses that nobody wants to live in because you're facing Franklin Mills Mall on a driveway, you're, you're on their property just about. And pretty soon you're going to be looking right at a Walmart. I hate to see these people have to spend $10,000, $20,000 to go to the board, have to wait, have the anxiety of all that. If there was somebody could look at this and say, you know, a little more precision, and say, you know what, you've got to pay more than you were paying, that's fine, I don't, I don't, you know, maybe they were a little understaffed, but nowhere near what this middle, so-called middle ground was. That's what I'm interested in right now. I mean, I know there's bigger questions about staffing, and everybody's going to be supportive of that, because we need it, training, if we can do it locally, hire locally to the extent possible, move them, move people in where, where we can't hire local. But these kind of cases are, the, the slip through the cracks, the unintended consequences of moving quickly, being understaffed, but there should be some review before the board gets it, a year from now, or whatever, because these are the little people cases that have big implications. And I just set that commercial property aside, because it shows how things can happen like that. But what could I tell them that would be helpful to them and, and make me feel better about it as well?
Thank you. I don't know if I can necessarily make you feel better, but I can tell you that if our people looked at it and it came through the FLR, FLR process, we've given it every consideration that we would give it from an appraisal, a mass appraisal viewpoint. We set up the process-
Well, I, you know what, why don't we, if that's your answer, let's stop there. I'll bring one of them to you as the boss. Because if this, if these are water customers, they'd be on the, I'd be in the water commissioner's office. Let me bring one to you and show it to you, have you tell me, I'm not saying the person wasn't doing their job. Some of these are just more sophisticated type of appraisals than 99.9% are, and that's why I've got five out of 60,000, is that, that's not a high percentage I'm asking about. I will bring one to you, if you tell me that they followed everything and this is the right number, I won't bring you the other four or talk about it again, okay? It'd be easier for me, because we don't work that way around here, but they did their job and that's it. We know people make mistakes, we know sometimes they're in a little bit over their head, every worker, I'm in a little over my head a lot. The, the, there's got to be a way of doing it informally where somebody isn't paying gobs of money to an attorney, or, and, and an appraiser who's going to testify and do all that, and then, you know, who knows what happens at that point, when this may have a simple solution. And if I, if I told you I had 500 cases, I wouldn't-
I was going to say-
I'd say, you know, let them go.
I, I was going to say, when they file with the board, we actually see it again. So we give it a second look when it's filed.
They've already filed with the board before your people gave them the-
Okay, so we'll see it again. If they file with the board, once the case, and this gets back to the scheduling, once the case is scheduled, we'll actually see it again, and then we'll-
Well, see, it's a difference. I want to be involved in this because I'm going to be asked to vote on whether you should have more money, more staff, whether you're doing the good job I think you're doing, under limited circumstances, or how, and how I think your operation runs. If I think your operation is very computerized and bureaucratic, and doesn't have room for the little guy to get heard, I may vote differently than I would if I thought there was some caring and some sympathy and some recognition that some pegs are square and our holes are all round, and they need special attention. That's all. And again, I'm not in here for, on behalf of Franklin Mills Mall, or any, I, I'm on behalf of people that are, that are struggling. And we all try to help people that are struggling, and to the extent that I can help some, just a few, I'd, I'd appreciate it. So, I want to deal with you. I'll just take one in. If you don't like the one, I won't bring you the other four, because I'll be wasting my time. These are slam dunks, these are not, and they're waiting, and they're out there, and they're worrying, and they're being told, there's no exceptions to this, even though I understand they're being told, well, there was commercial on one of your three little parcels, two are worthless, and the one that's probably worth, on a really good day, $400,000, $500,000, is, is got the commercial designation, so over 12 acres, most of which is, they're floodplain, not reachable, not buildable, they were reduced like 2 million from 8 million. This property, if it, if they can get a million dollars on their best day with the right, they're thrilled. I will show you that. If you tell me that your guy, you know, people did the right thing, we won't go any further. But I, I think you have to understand how this system of, of our trying to represent our constituents works, and that is, the, you're the court of last resort for us. We don't, we don't go over to the board of revision and ask them to review something in advance, and could they save people money? You, you work for the city, and they're an independent body. So I would like the opportunity to bring something into you, and you give it a fresh review. And with your senior people, give it to one of your senior, senior people, I don't care. I just think there's four or five cases that I've seen where the facts are pretty clear, and the reductions are in order, and could avoid somebody spending a lot of money to go to the board of revision of taxes. Is that okay?
Can we talk offline? Can, can?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
But it's okay?
I think the good answer is, in keeping it as yes.
You don't do this, I don't want to burden you with something you don't do. If you don't do it, I, I can go to water commissioner, I can go to revenue commissioner, I can go to the finance director with a kind of simple, I mean, a similar thing, and I can't go to OPA, then I just want to know it, that's all. And I go back to those people and I'll say, sorry, I did everything I could, I went right to the top of OPA, and OPA, if they looked at it, and they studied it, and they concluded, they were right, in OPA's, the boss of OPA's opinion. So, everybody else gets a review, I've had water bills $50,000 too high, Councilman Heenan has more of it than I have, where, we have to deal with people at the top to, to get them to understand that there's, there's exceptions that, that have to be looked at, so people can stay afloat. And we don't always get the answer we expect, well, we get the hearing, and the consideration and the review that we, that we expect, that's all. I mean, I don't have to go offline to find out whether you're willing to do that or not. The, the discussion will be offline, but I don't expect to go offline to find out, when you're on the witness stand, whether you're willing to just hear one of my cases. I've described a couple of them, it'll be one of those. Won't be the business guy, I don't care about that too much, in terms of priority. But the little people, yes.
We'll look at it again. But point I wanted to make was-
It's always the but that we look out for.
Yeah. I set up a, we set up a process.
I understand that.
So, so, but I'll look at this particular case.
Okay. I have a process in my office for handling simple constituent complaints, except there's always an exception to every process that I have to get into the weeds and deal with, because there are always exceptions. There's always exceptions, and otherwise, we wouldn't have elected officials. We would just have everybody on a computer, and everything would get, okay, that's it. But anyway, so I, I look forward to it, and there are callbacks, and we'll, we'll take care of this in time for callbacks if that's necessary.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, thank you. Councilman Squill, you haven't had a chance, I knew you'd be down here, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
And just to follow up a little bit on Councilman O'Neil's question, it is true that you do review it again before it goes to the BRT, so you get a chance to do that, but that's after, especially these big cases, after everybody's spent a whole lot of money preparing for the BRT case, to get it ready. So, even though you call them back later and say, listen, you're going to the board of re-tact, BRT, we'll reduce it a little further when you take the deal, and then they may take it or may not, but they already have really engaged either an attorney or got their property assessed, especially if it was a larger value property. So that, that's the difference, I think, if you understand that part.
I'm not saying I don't understand it, I'm just saying, the process that we set up, was set up so we would, it's like none other, same process everywhere else in the country. We set it up for people to have an opportunity to grieve with us, and then to grieve at the next level, and then ultimately to grieve in court. And so I didn't want to have a situation where everything that we've looked at initially, we've got to look at again, because that goes outside the confines of us setting up an, an initial process. But I understand-
I know what you were going to say, but go ahead. You, you, the way this sounded to me when you were setting it up, and the way you're, it's sounding now, and I know it's not the case, is that somebody was going to get a chance to talk to somebody. People don't get a chance to present their case. It's done by email, or in writing, and that's a totally different thing than sitting down with somebody, and, and I understand you don't always have the time for it. But when I talk to people, I thought for sure they had a sit-down, they went over things, and, oh, no, no, they submitted some stuff, and the answer came back, and that was it. And that is different than a process of true review, because, and I understand because why, but I, when I'm giving you five out of 60,000, I actually find it disrespectful that somebody wouldn't be willing to listen to five cases out of 60,000, that might take a half an hour, if I did all five of them, and just explained them to you the way that person wished they were able to explain them to the, to the assessor. But the assessor doesn't have time, and the system doesn't handle it. So I'm actually being a filter for you, because I'm telling you that 559,950 cases, or 95 cases, are, look pretty good. These five, could you take another look at? I, I don't want to make this more than it is, but I'm going to say, like, we have our processes, and we don't, we don't outside of, we all go outside our processes when the, when the case calls for it. I just want to present something to you that I think is one, or two, or three of those cases.
An unusual kind of case, yeah.
I think you take it accountable.
Okay. You're excited, I don't want to stop you.
No, no.
All right, I have a couple of questions. Basically, the assessment process that was done, was completed, and then you had the first-level review. First-level, first-level review was almost done for everybody, or is it now complete?
Yeah, we're practically finished first-level review, we have 3,000 or less cases.
3,000 more to do?
Yeah. But we could have, as I stated earlier, we could have been done with those cases, so we had to jump in and do to handle the board revision of taxes cases.
Well, yeah, we couldn't wait till you were done to start them, or we would never get done. So, right?
Well, we could have been done had we had, we have an issue with scheduling, and so without the fact, without us having it scheduled, we have to handle all of the cases, as many as possible, versus what we know will be scheduled and heard.
Isn't, now, didn't you meet with the BRT now to come up with a, an arrangement for scheduling of cases in the future?
We met with the B, the last time OPA met with the BRT was, it was about a month, maybe a month and a half ago, but we still haven't seen a schedule for six months. We understand that they're maybe attempting to put something together, but we still haven't seen one.
So you want a six-month schedule out?
We need a six-month schedule because, in the assessment field, you get that so you can plan your activities around what's going to be heard, so you can, so you can, so you can address the other things that need to be addressed in the assessment profession.
Right, so right now, you're getting, are you getting a schedule a week ahead of time? Two weeks ahead of time, or?
We have cases that are going, we have dates, a date or two in May, but we don't have the actual cases. So it fluctuates, we might get them a month ahead of time, we might get them a couple of weeks ahead of time, it, it fluctuates.
Because it's true, too, now that you guys are doing that, and I think the BRT is now hopefully coordinating with OPA, because as you do these cases, as they give you them, do you review them again and maybe call the resident and say, well, listen, we can lower this before you go into the BRT, to not have them go in front of the board?
Well, typically, what happens is that, once we receive the board case, if it was an FLR that came through, and then they filed a board case, we'll review it again, and we'll see if there's anything that we might have missed, or oftentimes, the biggest thing difference is that we'll actually get a field inspection, we'll get the opportunity for the property owner to let us in the property, and we'll get to see things that-
And will you make a deal with them to maybe lower their assessment before the board BRT?
If there, if there is any reduction that can be made, any adjustment, we'll make it then, and then they'll determine whether they want to withdraw their board case or not.
So, have you done that to date? Has there been any cases where the OPA has actually contacted the person who's going in front of the BRT, and actually made the case so they didn't have to go?
Sure, we, we've had situations like that.
Okay, so that, that may really curtail or limit the number of cases in front of the board, correct?
Well, once again, that may, but, you know, we need, what would be more efficient, if we had the schedule, we could reach out to those people and-
I agree, so now, if you go out six months out, and you, and you get to them, and you make a deal with them ahead of time, they may withdraw five months earlier, and then they're, the BRT could then schedule more people for those days, and have hearings.
Possibly, yes.
And then, so we could get through the number quicker, because our goal is to get as many appeals heard as possible.
Now, I don't want to speak for them in what they will be able to do or not, but I know that we'll be able to look at those properties ahead of time and possibly get them to withdraw from the BRT.
Okay, if we could go back around.
Okay.
Councilman Johnson's next, anyway. Councilman Johnson?
Yeah, well, I just want to also, I want to piggyback off of what Councilman Squiller just said. So do you have actual data of residents who you contacted, who received a decrease, right, and there was no need for them to go in front of the BRT in terms of them appealing their taxes? We have that information documented, of like how many per district?
We could get, we could get, we could get some, get some data like that.
If you can provide that, for the chair, please. And the reason why, although this was Councilman Squiller's statement, we meet countless constituents who are in a holding pattern. One, they've been waiting for the response for, one, the appeal, and then, two, trying to figure out, do you move forward on the old assessment tax bills? Under my, under my standard, you don't have to pay, I think under the Councilman Squiller's last bill, you, you would actually pay your old tax bill until you find out if your tax bill has been appealed, I mean, the ruling, the ruling based upon your appeal, am I correct?
I believe that's how it works, I can't speak to the, any billing issues.
That's correct, Mr. Duba-
That's correct now?
That's correct, am I right, Mr. Duba? Yes.
Mr. Penalties.
So you, should we just hold off and pay the old one?
And then you don't have to pay interest and penalties on any, I imagine.
Okay, all right. And so, moving forward, you talked about processes.
Yes.
And there's a process for review based upon national standards, correct?
Correct.
So, and moving forward, what's going to be the exact process to make sure that the assessments, and you talked about doing them yearly, this is a possibility, that we address the accuracy of the assessment, right? I'm glad, I'm glad my colleague from the great northeast talked about having some issues in this area, because primarily, separate from Councilman Clark, and Squiller, and Blackwell, we know we're, we're like bombarded with this issue significantly because of our increase in property values. But, but nevertheless, you talked about processes of review, using national standards, what are going to be the, can you lay out the council, let's say we move beyond the numbers after BRT, because you said, I can't tell you what we're going to do for 2015 until we find out. Let's assume you have the numbers from BRT, let's lay out what these yearly assessments will look like, what will be the national best practices that you will be using, because you talked about national processes for review, what are we going to be using for the accuracy of the assessment moving forward? And I just want to give one small example. When we will hold town hall meetings, not only in Point Breeze, but in other parts of my district, Southwest, Center City, Graduate Hospital, some parts of Packer Park, people will talk about how they were inaccuracies on how they believed that their houses were actually assessed. So for instance, a home on a 200 block of Federal Street is assessed at, you know, $400,000 on one side of the street, but on the opposite side, this, this is a hypothetical scenario, but on the opposite side of the street, at a lower value. And we would see that in countless times, and those were the calls that we, we would receive. would receive. Moving forward though, because I mean, it's already implemented, what are we going to be doing to ensure the accuracy to address such type of issues moving forward? And your best practices, because you talked about, you probably don't want to review those five because we have a process based upon a national standard that we use for people to review their case, case issues.
Sure, sure. In our typical reassessment practice, we constantly have periods where we review things. After every step, for example, when we do sales validation, we have supervisors and a lot of them are sitting back here, they consistently review what was done by their particular units. We get down to our reassessments and then we look at the reassessments versus the sales and the current assessments and we have measurements. And we went through a lot of this last year when we talked about the coefficient of dispersion and all of that and all the statistical measures. So we have some very, very valid national standards that we use. But I think the key that you'll have in the next reassessment that you, that we, we talked about last year was, the next reassessment will be audited by someone that the council recommends. We only ask that it's someone that is IAAO and that's International Association of Assessing Officers meets their standard.
Is this a property assessment consultant?
The, the entire reassessment will be audited and then you'll get a, a report on what they found and their measurements and things like that.
So there is an expense for a million dollars for a property assessment?
No, no, no. That's something different.
That's something different.
Yeah.
So elaborate on that property assessment consultant. What is their job want to be for a million dollars?
That is for someone to come in. What I like to do is enhance our system. I like to start down the process of giving our system things that you might not see now that you can see in the future. And a good example of that would be pictures of, of properties, sketches of properties, some of your more difficult properties. I like to see, I like to start down the path of one day having a sketch and a picture for every, at least residential parcel throughout the city. And that's, that's for the consultant to start that type of work.
So the million dollars is for, I'm, I'm trying to wrap my, so this is one person? This is a firm?
It's a firm.
It's a firm.
Typically, it's a firm that will come out and you'll take a set of parcels. For example, if we had 20,000 parcels and I say, well, I want you to go out and measure and sketch 20,000 residential parcels throughout the city and take a pic, a snapshot.
How, how is that, how is that separate from the actual assessors who went out and did the assessment? How would that be different moving forward?
Well, the assessor, well, the assessors go out to capture characteristics that are put in a model.
But, but the million dollar firm will take pictures.
Will measure and take pictures and so I can do things like load it up, possibly load it up in an application and start down that process.
So can't you get a, a more experienced group of assessors that would actually do both? When they, it seemed like if, if one group is going out to do characteristics, this group is doing data collection. I'm not going to be smart and just say, take pictures, but data collections, which includes taking pictures, that's two separate operations, would it seem like doing just somewhat of the same thing?
Somewhat, but not all. You have to understand there's certain skill sets and measuring certain types of properties. Like we have some very difficult properties here in the city that have all types of corners and things like that, that I would like to get measured and sketched and get a actual snapshot of those parcels and start down the process with those before I start to spread it out city and, and citywide on a citywide basis.
And just one last thing. And what's the actual dollar amount that's going to be going into the RFP for the, for the upgrading of technology?
I'd have to get that for you.
So we have the million dollar number for the snapshot picture taking?
Million dollars is for a measurement, sketch and snapshot. The RFP is for an entire system that will encompass a lot of that within it, possibly. We'll have to see.
Thank you. Thank you, councilman. If I could sneak one question in here. In your first go around with, with Councilman Johnson, you talked about you're particularly going to concentrate on the reassessment where there was activity. Is that a fair statement?
Yeah, in neighborhoods, I'm going to concentrate on the whole city, but normally what happens is that property values won't change for areas where there's no.
No sales, right?
Right.
So you're looking at sales.
Where there are sales that are higher than the assessments.
But those sales, you, you'll be raising the assessment for where the property was sold, but probably that whole block or that whole area?
Yeah, that, that entire area. Normally, activity happens in an area.
Mm-hmm.
So if an area gets hot, for example, he mentioned Point Breeze, I'm not saying everybody that Point Breeze will be, so everybody don't call me today. But if we hypothetically take Point Breeze, if Point Breeze got extremely hot and people start buying properties and the excess, yeah, and excess.
It didn't get there, it's there.
The current assessments, then those assessments will have to go up.
For every, yeah.
Yeah, for everybody.
Okay. Yeah. Councilman Reynolds Brown, thank you. Thank you, councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Quick follow-up on the staffing issue and then I'm curious to hear more about the relationship between your office and the BRT. What specific qualifications or credentials are required minimum for the tax assessors?
At this point, what the city of Philadelphia has done is raised the level of qualification to at least that of what's required in the rest of the state of Pennsylvania, okay? As of 1992, you needed to be certified by the Pennsylvania State Board of Certified Real Estate Appraisers to be an assessor, to do appraisals for ad valorem tax purposes anywhere in Pennsylvania. Philadelphia and Pittsburgh were exempted from that originally.
Oh, really?
The exemption's been lifted from Pittsburgh about, I'm going to say about eight or nine years ago and, you know, we see pending legislation all the time to lift it from Philadelphia. We got ahead of that and made it a requirement within the city of Philadelphia. So within two years of hire, an entry-level evaluator has to have the same certification, the CPE.
I see.
We've, we've committed to the paying for that certification, for the courses needed, for the licensing fees and for the continuing education going forward.
Really?
Yes.
Wow. Okay. With that said, speak more thoroughly about the relationship with the board of revision of taxes. And, and let me make sure I understand, is, is your responsibility to do the assessment and is their responsibility to assess or evaluate, examine all appeals, correct?
Right. We set the actual assessments. We set the values for the assessments. And then we have a review process called the first level. But when a formal appeal is filed, it's handled by the board of revision of taxes. And the board of revision of taxes has to give us a schedule to say, on May 2nd, 20 cases are filed and these are the addresses. Without the addresses, we don't know what, what to prepare for. Now, in an assessment industry, once the appeals are filed and everything is, is, is laid out, you get a schedule of at least several months as to what is going to occur on what date. Because of the issue with how many cases, you know, and things like that, that the board will hear, we haven't been able to garnish that schedule. So I'm having to prepare for everything that filed, not knowing when it's going to be heard, which removes me from any ability to do any work for next year's reassessment.
I see. What if, speak now to the relationship with the sheriff department. And, and speaking actually with the staff at the sheriff department, their number of addictions has uptick and they, they are not sure the, they don't want to say that it's an, an exact consequence of what we're going through with regards to OPA, but they expect to once they come to offer testimony. So what is the current working relationship with the sheriff department?
We haven't heard anything from, have you heard anything? We haven't heard anything from, we've heard a lot of theories on the fact that AVI has caused this, that and the other, but we haven't, you know, naturally we don't think that all of them are necessarily. But we don't, we haven't heard anything from the, from the sheriff's department.
Since the money collected through the property taxes, critically important for the funding of the schools, what method do you use to project revenue accurately considering the appeals, the loop program and the senior tax freezes?
You don't have to do that.
Hello?
OPA actually doesn't have anything to do with the tax revenue projections. Those come from budget, working with revenue. And in building the budget, we made an assumption about the level of appeals and actually how long they would take and made assumptions about how many homesteads there would be.
Okay, stop right there, as, as Steve Harvey would say. And so what you, did your presumptions stack up to the new reality we're reckoning with?
So the original assumptions did not. We modified them for this year's plan. We assumed that appeals would be heard more quickly than they were. So we've adjusted that assumption now and we assume that appeals will really go through the end of next fiscal year. If they go longer than that, that will create kind of a hole for our budget.
And is it fair to assume that those assumptions were made in collaboration with the office that is principally responsible for revenue and OPA for hitting those targets as you just described them?
So we talked to OPA about what a typical level of appeals would be and what typical results of appeals would be, but they didn't have, they weren't involved in actually putting the projections together. We used them kind of as, as experts to help us frame what the projections would be, but they didn't have anything to do with the projections.
Okay. And so are you surprised at the, at what we know now to be the case?
I don't, I think that doing 570,000 new assessments and getting 23,000 appeals isn't that surprising. I mean, it's not, it's not a larger number than we anticipated. I think we're surprised at how long it's taking, but I think there, there may be some progress on that front.
Okay. I hope the bell has rung, so we're honored to bell.
Okay. Thank you, councilman. Councilman Heenan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. DeBose, if you would, please. So just going over some quickly, going over some numbers from a union electrician, now elected official, represents a sixth district. So my numbers may be off a little bit, but taking a look at, just, just going back to as we started, as we started the process with AVI. And the shift from commercial to residential, in, I'm reading off of a chart, so just trust I, you know, from what the chart is. So commercial's seen a decrease in, in, in tax revenues of $55 million and the burden shift over to the residential and like $71 million in revenues as, as far as.
There was a shift.
A shift. So, so there was a, there was a shift and I think we all agreed upon that.
Yes.
And, and by the way, I want to state for the record, I, I also think that we all agreed that the system was broken, all right, and it needed to be reassessed and we needed to have a fair and equitable system.
And then we attempted to put some protections in on the residential side.
And, and the responsible protections are in. And, and right now we're tweaking, all right, some of, some of these things responsibly. So one of, my, my question is, so just from my review of the FLR's initial results, we have a, a, a decrease of approximately about real property of like a billion, a billion dollars, all right? So how is that, how do we make up that money in the overall aggregate, all right, come, come this year? Is it going to be through the three to three and a half percent increase in property values? How do we make up that kind of money when, and, and what's concerning with me is the trend of the reviews, all right? 16% of the reviews were only in favor of where the burden was shifted towards residence. And the commercial end of it was in excess of 40 to 50% of, in favor of commercial and, and, and industrial and stores and things like that. And I.